...of the United States of America to a two month, which extends, nominations on the bottom in the list of with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone. Morning. Before we approve our agenda, we know that the claim wasn't listed on this, so we'll add the claims.
Yeah, that should be on there.
Without adjustments or motion approved. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then our minutes, of course, from September nineteenth.
I move to approve the minutes as planned from September nineteen.
Okay, any motion?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody with general public concerns? Seeing none, I'll move down to the reading of the ordinances. Let's start with the second reading. Ordinance sixty-five, ordinance to stop the code record database to livestock confinement operations. You went through and reviewed these last week and they were read and they were sent to county attorney's office and reviewed them. Did you see any issues or problems with that? With that, if there are no public comments on that and somebody would like to approve the second reading, it'd be possible to waive it with a third, but I guess that's a separate motion.
Separate.
So I guess I'd ask for a motion to approve the second reading ordinance number sixty-five.
Now make the motion to approve the second reading ordinance number sixty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does somebody want to make a motion to approve the possible waiver or the waiver of the third reading? I will, I will. Second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And without that formally adopted too, under that third reading.
Then we'll move down to the second reading ordinance sixty-six and that would be the same, John has reviewed that. Everything left in order. I have no comments, Lily has no comments from anybody this week, so.
I move to approve ordinance number sixty-six, I presume.
Third second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then I allow it to be.
I'll make a motion to waive the third reading ordinance number sixty-six. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then before we move back up to our first minutes, is there everybody a chance to review claims this week? No range just or claims to this county, is there a motion?
I reviewed the claims for seventy-four thousand, oh twenty-five point sixty-four and move approve thereof.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good. Um, I guess our next item is on these tax, sign up sales certificates for Harry Nelson.
Hello, we request wondering Nelson to get an assignment from the county for property. In the way township, he's offering to pay what do the sign up fifty-four dollars and twenty-four cents.
No town name, you can go over there.
He's paying, sold out, owing.
Okay.
No danger of anything. He owns the land next to it and there's another parcel he's looking to get from a private investor. Pretty straightforward.
Why move over to China? That should be approved of sale to Gary Nelson for five dollars, sixty-four dollars and twenty-four cents.
You have a motion, is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Any other all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, let's go back down to, we're changing dates for the open air Bible reading project. Any updates?
Yeah, the gentleman who was setting this up was not able to do that over the Labor Day weekend, that's when they were going to do that, he was having trouble finding some volunteers and that. And so someone else had stepped up and she called me the other day and she would like to have it October thirteenth and fourteenth from eight in the morning until eight at night. So they possibly would need a plug-in at least for some light later on in the day and those things.
Oh, it'd actually be dark.
Yeah. Otherwise, they shouldn't need anything else. They were gonna set up underneath the trees. I told her she might want to bring a tent of some kind, you know, this block, but that's entirely up to them. We don't have anything like that here, so. And they were okay with that.
We discussed this last time.
It's the same group, it's just a different person who's heading it up.
And they're doing that across the state of Iowa, so I see no reason not to go ahead and approve the change of date. I'm usually accept the change of date for the project and often it's only eighteen fourteen.
I'll second it.
A motion, is there a second? Any other discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Uh, they're visiting a little bit up in Drange or something at the moment, so I think we'll wait till eight to forty-five, we'll send in some committee reports, I guess.
Okay, on Tuesday I had my landfill eating down at five thirty in Ford Dodge. Um, they're still trying to wrap up a little bit of work on their hazardous waste building. Um, they're hoping to have it up and running by March, they're starting to hire staff for it and then getting them trained to handle all the oddball stuff that comes in there. It's, and that's quite a deal, I guess. And they're gonna start off very small because from experiences from other places have had these, once they open them, they just get overwhelmed, get overwhelmed, so they're gonna limit it as to how much you can bring in at one time. So that was, um, some concerns there, but, uh, anything else, please, please move it down there. That's it.
Uh, let's see, Friday, the twenty-third, I had a sudden judicial in Webster City. We changed two policies, one on hiring process and one on temporary appointments. And, uh, one was for, uh, if you had two relatives working, one couldn't be under the other one where they could supervise, uh, be supervisory over the other ones, so. And, uh, we're gonna receive the same amount of money that we've received for the last, um, three years for seventeen. We put in for a twenty-seven thousand dollar grant for, uh, drug courts. Uh, the, the money we get just doesn't seem to go far enough, so we're gonna put into that grant and see if we can help it out a little bit. And, uh, they were thinking of building, a new building in Marshalltown because, uh, yeah, the one they got isn't, it's costing so much to keep it up and, uh, to run it, so they're thinking of building a new one, but they gotta do a feasibility, look into it, see if it's gonna be payout to do it, so. And that was all I had.
Uh, Monday night I went to the city council meeting for the, the question over by the new fairway store and, uh, given some information as to the amount of acres that we had tied to that creek. Uh, they basically said that they were really not concerned about the amount of water that they're gonna put in there, they're gonna do some drainage, uh, and they assured, uh, Marlene, they're gonna take care of that. The one guy said that he had some contacts in Des Moines, so hopefully if we can talk to him about possibly getting that lagoon area cleaned out maybe and see if we couldn't get some better flow through there behind Harklaugh's house, you know, where all that mud settled. So he's supposed to be getting a name for, of course, for that. Uh, Wednesday, I had my ministerial association meeting, um, the food pantry was there, uh, the Edmo was there, did the presentation and, uh, some of the things that, uh, they talked about was the, uh, LP assist. Um, Tuesday, Pat said she's got a truck coming in with just shy of three thousand pounds of food, so we're hopefully gonna get a couple of kids from the high school that, uh, are wandering around up there, looking to wear off some energy to help them unload that. Um, Edmo said that they had done, uh, the back to school packs for the kids, they ended up doing forty-four packs, they had their dinner at Rustix with a hundred and ten families. Um, they're doing a push right now for the coats for kids, um, so far, just barely getting going, they've already got thirty-eight kids signed up, so probably gonna have a large amount of assistance for young kids that need coats for the winter, I believe at that time already. Um, then Thursday I had my CFR meeting, um, for those of you that haven't seen it, that's the picture, hopefully someday we're gonna have a, a building sitting down there. They're still working with, uh, them trying to get things lined up, but so far everything's progressing, they're still looking for the candidate to lead the, the fundraising and we haven't, we have some names, but we haven't put anybody's name to the title, so. Other than that, uh, that was all I had for the week.
Monday I had workforce development in Fort Dodge. At that meeting we saw Molly Van, Van Berinkoon, he's a board member and Independence Industry. We spent a lot of time talking about the training required and forthcoming of the home project eighteen plant at Frank County and how they're gonna be involved with hiring people there. Iowa Central gets involved with a lot of training for that, Iowa Central's more too, so. And we heard we fortunately, you know, partners, uh, it's involved with workforce development. Uh, one of the things, Dr. McKinney passed out little brochure, gave each one of those. Iowa Central's got a bondage coming up to renew their sixty-seven cent levy and I gave each a brochure about, you know, that place is fifty years old now and they're starting to run out of, of, uh, maintenance money. And one of, one of the reasons they wanna do this is getting concerned about security, they wanna have a way to lock down the campus too, they have one of these active shooters like they've had some places around. That's part of, in this little brochure it tells about, suddenly they give up things they wanna use the money for. I think the other people probably have absentee volatility for that, they gave us one anyway.
Well, they haven't been funded yet.
Okay, anyway, they said this is an application to send to you guys. And elections will be December the sixth, you're probably aware of that.
Yeah, that it was.
Okay, that was about to extend workforce development, development. Then on Thursday we had a housing meeting in Fort Dodge, has involved these six seven county area. The main trust there was that we're trying to get work with MITS and hire a building inspector, that like a lot of counties, they have a building inspector that requires inspection of all rental properties and new, new, uh, construction to make sure they meet building codes. Not talking yet slum landlords, but there's a lot of them around in some counties that they aren't meeting the code, to get a, a building inspector that would probably be a user's fee. I know in some counties it costs the, the apartment owner fifty bucks a year to make sure they're up to code. And maybe MITS would put some money in that too, but MITS has said they'd house the people and we share it with Fort Dodge. They got one, it's not enough for Fort Dodge, but they have one for the whole county. So that's something to look forward to, maybe becoming down the tube. I think that was the extent of my meetings for the week.
Okay, maybe I had, um, I, I had a drainage district association meeting put a hook on us on the twenty-first, nine thirty, um, went over our budget, went over different items, talked a little bit about the, um, annual meeting in December, it's a week later because there was a conflict with ISAC in, um, Des Moines, the first weekend, the first Friday in December, uh, November, December, I'm sorry. So they moved it from that first Friday, December the second, which is probably the ninth, I guess, and maybe, yeah, so December, December. And, uh, a lot of discussions was with Scott, Jacobson, with Kellam County, and we talked a lot about the drainage lawsuit and, oh, there's a lot going on there, there's a lot of intriguing angles, there's been funding, people wanted to fund it and take the suit over and, and list all counties, but they're trying to maintain it to these three, they wanted to continue the suit with just three counties, was actually making up a whole bunch of other issues to do this, that's why they wanna hold it to this three county area until this thing. I think that Des Moines Water Works was hoping everybody would get drawn in, if everybody got drawn in, imagine if we lost that suit, what that would look like for everybody. All that being said, it's taken a lot of money.
Thank you, Danny.
Even with the funding and stuff, there's just money that we've raised for fire drainage that we've sent the last twenty-five thousand to them, so they should be caught up right now with their lawyer fees, I've paid the local ones, you know, they were the last ones to get paid, they didn't even pay. Um, my big concern after talking to Scott, he's been, you know, he's been involved in this from the start and I think if they look, if we, if we win, I think they'll appeal and if they win, I think there's about five other areas are gonna go after, I think it'll only open the door for a larger lawsuit, so. This thing's probably gonna drag on a long time and it's gonna cost people a lot of money. That's just how it's gonna end up being, I think. And I'm sure it's made discussions, opened new discussions about, you know, how to address it, you know, people are engaging more, we're talking about it, but all that being said, you know, there's not enough dollars in need, not enough concrete solutions to improve the water quality, have to raise the water improvements, so. We're gonna have to through this process, see how the court trial case comes out and hopefully, the fire drainage will stand up, in this case, if they don't, it's gonna really work.
Do you think Farm Braille will step up and say they're just gonna pay for the legal fees?
They would, if they can't, because if they allow them to do that, it has to open up a case statewide and that's the big hangup. And Farm Braille doesn't understand why we don't wanna do that, but they're concerned if they lose that case and it was opened up statewide, do you want us to all be sued? I mean, just almost, I mean, everybody's gonna get drawn in eventually if this thing keeps going on, if they don't settle out of court, so. We'll probably have a pretty discussion about that at the annual meeting, and probably get an annual meeting, hopefully Doug Strile has some more information by then, but you know, this process is pretty slow because everything's being reviewed right now after the case has been heard, the first step, so. And that's all I had, thank you.
Okay.
Are you gonna have any other items to discuss today?
No.
Okay, with that, we probably won't have to have you come back, but.
I will be.
Any, all we have, pardon me, because I forgot about that.
Your board meeting, any exciting forthcoming?
Um, no, we did a planning session, so we were planning some things for the future, but nothing right now that we can.
All right, we're gonna need to take motion to go. I'll move.
Second.
I'll go ask you first, this is.
Trish, yeah. Hey.
Trish ain't feeling very good today.
Oh, that's all.
Is that her over there?
I heard you talking to her.
She's not getting a lot.
In the, in the, it's a little bit, it's a little bit, maybe she should wear it.
She's got a mark. I wake up at four o'clock, see they don't windows open around.
It's cold, wasn't it?
You're trying to freeze me out here.
Forty-three, yeah.
Yeah.
I thought you were, yeah, we know it better anyway, if we want more rain.
Well, I'm gonna send a band this morning.
Yeah. The pee for about an hour, I either got my room for you.
Morning, John. I just come in.
You guys ready?
More or less. I'm in a period again, man, I'm gonna fill up the frost oil holes that we had last year on Roach, there's black spots and it's full of mud and water.
Anyone, any, which one in particular? I know we've worked on.
The one out of his, by his place, all the way.
I mean, out there in C forty-nine, you take that gravel road, I had a frost wave last spring out there, you know, so bad, now they did do nothing. There's black mud, it's full of water holes, gotta drive around. I think God, we fill it now.
God, I think he's working on, or they're still working on the one up by your place, hopefully.
And I would go out on Long Tree Road and did some work on that one too. They're working a lot.
I just thought it would be a good time to fill them up before the next frost picks up in the spring.
Yeah.
Because they couldn't go through them in the spring, you know?
Give me a hand with a little thing like that.
All right, so I'm gonna leave right away.
Uh, we appreciate that. I'm in Grange, our first I was in, it's down to the drainage district insurance, I'm concerned with, I already paved this four feet across, it's about twelve fifteen inches higher than this soil surface, we, we talked about this. And also this one tile, it's the evidence broker, because there's nothing comes out of there, it's on the, just about like punches there, there's about three places there that are, both been plugged and I never replanted that much corn in the sixty years we've been there from that wonderful nest, but, uh, I just wanted to make sure it was under that , so we know about it.
Well, I guess it's a matter of, probably just do a work order, won't you?
Mm-hmm, I have a work order.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know who to have to, you have to evaluate that, what's it called, it's intake.
Intake, oh, the, the one.
It's, it's his, it's too high, it's the intake.
It's, is it not the one south of the tour center?
No, this is on.
This is all on his, okay, yeah, 'cause that one is the same thing.
Right.
Gee, it's working.
Right, 'cause we get the intake.
Yeah.
See if the line needs.
That was supposed to then cut off and of course with the hell of a loop and chain and everything there, never got done.
Never got done. So we just need to, I.
Now the thing is in the hell of a place and have to farm around that for the rest of your life with a damn thing like that.
Well, yeah, and we will absolutely get something done about it, we just, I think we work to assign a contractor and I meet with the contractor after.
Okay, you're doing that way?
Yeah, I, 'cause I, his description is, sounds like another one we have to deal with, where we just.
We got beans or corn.
Get a load on.
Beans or corn, compatible, all right.
How far?
So they get corn out, maybe get two distance and wait it this long, ask the best, you know? But try and get some of the money, that's gonna be a while, we're on test in twenty-three, so, yeah.
Ah, yeah, and some is coming out, but.
Yeah.
Kind of.
We're, we're with Trish and contract, I'm, it's, we'll, next week we can get, we got that done. And Sean Rick, he put tile up to my folks and he says, there's another tile somewhere in here, one which, I had a pile up in the middle field, well, they went out of there, everything was hauled up to, 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 you know, how much it was smashed or, or what, but, uh... Well, I'm gonna try to sign this thing, contractor, look into that, see if we can get somebody out there to keep this.
Was this the same, tile that Nate had a couple of the bricks, is it, I thought Gary had a couple of intakes or something?
He has an intake.
But it's all, is it all the same?
On the same district, not in the same area.
No, I know it's not the same area, but is it the same tile project? So then, if we get one for one, hopefully we can.
Get together.
Yeah.
And maybe do them all, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, good point, Chris.
So Rick, you say, copy that and get that, you want, that's something after.
I just, I referred you a guy on the phone this weekend, did he call you, about twenty-two? Land's office, he called you? Oh, yes, yes, yep. Sure you answered his question? I couldn't. Yes. Thank you. Do that.
All right, I'll check, I'll check, that particular tile was spread up behind the barn.
The one that they go over?
And there, well, I never, I said, I've never had that much water set there in sixty years.
Do you think we'll have to just dig it up in several places, or?
It can be repaired, I'd be happy with that, but, but when you got chunks of tile coming up a hundred and fifty yards from where it's supposed to be, it's evidently busted or something.
Do you know what size that was originally?
Uh, I think it's an eight inch, but I'll posit it on that.
How long of line would we have to run to replace it?
It'll be almost half a mile.
Okay, well, there's digging.
You gotta dig down that one, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You can find if the rest is good, where it's broken, but, but, it's all, but, it must have run along with the tile.
What's your best phone number? I think I got it on the file, but, phone number?
Uh, I have a tab, my card, uh, three six eight thirty-two oh one, I believe.
Okay, and I'll check that.
Yeah, it's eighty-four.
Yeah, I think I have it on the file on a note, yeah.
Yeah.
I just was gonna get it and be positive about it.
That's going to be, that's going to be that. Well, that's gonna need to look at.
Yeah, I'm down for other things, so, yeah, Trish and I can work on that. Nice, done.
Okay, so this morning, our main, our concern here, our object, next object is, um, eighty-four, and we got the preliminary report, engineering report here. Along that line, we've got some other information, what's been going on, so I'll just turn it over here.
Okay, um, you're probably all aware, Bran Hoyle has been working on an area up there, uh, behind some homes where they've stowed some trees. Um, was suspect that there were roots in the tile, um, that has since been dug up, roots taken out, tiles replaced, um...
How many tiles did they do there, did they, Chris?
Fifty-some?
Okay, so pretty good area.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they put in new tiles, didn't they?
Yes. I was there, I probably stopped three or four different times while they had equipment in the area. Um, it's pretty well cleaned up now, I looked at it this morning. Um, the good news is, we had a guy down here, um, after you had your last rain and nothing was pounded there. He looked in the intakes, the water was flowing through all the intakes, it wasn't coming out of the intakes. Um, I guess the good part, two good things about that. What we proposed in his report would have taken care of it, uh, would have replaced that line, um, but it also means that it appears to be working well enough that our recommendations in this report, I would recommend be put on hold. Um, it's just flowing that well. I'd be very glad on any input from landlords, but, um, district was established in nineteen fifteen, so it's over a hundred years old, so it's not to say there won't be other problems surface, but this report is good for ten years, um, the only thing you'd have to do is update your cost estimate and, uh, to move forward with it in the future if you need to. Um, we still are talking about digging up an area, an alternate outlet, uh, it appears to be blocked somewhat.
The alternate outlet?
Yeah.
Appears to be somewhat blocked.
Yes, so we may look at still digging that out, wouldn't take just but three to four hours probably as far as piece of equipment in there, so.
So it's gotta be on a dryer here.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, this has just been a disaster for us getting field work for open ditches. High water early, so you couldn't do it, and then the crops were in the way, high water.
The breeding, wasn't there a septic tank issue, if there's a septic leak?
He caught the end of the leach field, now I didn't see it get repaired, but he, the most of the digging was, he did not, uh, install that one, but he installed the one to the north, Bran Hoyle I'm talking about.
Right.
So he knew exactly what was in there, um...
But we aren't having any, we got that thing here.
As far as I know.
As far as we know.
I mean, I saw, I saw the last piece of the, the leach field there, now, again, be glad for any input if there's issues there, but, at this point, I would state that the report was done, looking for an alternate route to get away from the trines and possible crushed tile. It would have done it, but with the repairs that have been done, I think it would be a waste of money to do this right now.
Have they cut down all the trees there in the back?
They're pretty well, yeah, they have. Now, those stumps haven't come out and I'm not sure how that's gonna be handled, but, and we should talk to the property owners probably about that, their preference.
Such a correct way to handle that report. We usually receive and accept, do we just receive, accept and table?
Uh, it wouldn't matter, I necessarily use the word table, 'cause that easily indicates you'll be looking at, yeah, further date you'd set.
I think we just accept and approve and then based, and then after that, based on the engineer's recommendations, we just, um, not move on.
Not take any further action. There you go. I like that, right there, good, yeah.
We're, we're okay approving, accepting, because that's been for ten years, it's been done.
If we do that, then I can let them know if, if that's how we handle it, if they wanna change, if they would like to.
I can make a separate, separate motion, say, look, where's the table, any action on it?
Yeah.
That way they're clear.
That's what I think.
But I think the, the except part's separate from that.
Okay.
So I think with that, we should go ahead and accept and approve it, because there are motions to do.
I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion, we accept, approve it before that's decided.
Okay, we have motion second, follow me.
Aye.
Now, discussion this side, any comments, anybody on the audience, or anything?
Yeah, that's...
Otherwise, at this point, we're probably, and I'm sure, with all the screen we had, somebody would have been, Mel, you could get calls.
I go through it on, I go through it on Sunday, and, I mean, there's a few puddles, but we've had rain, and it looked pretty decent in there.
Apparently what was cleaned out made a big difference.
Yeah, and the river, and the river is still high, so...
That's why I said, you know, the river is down, but the river's still high, and we don't have a problem, so it looks good to me.
I went the other way, I went towards the water, and went towards Renwick, and up to Livermore and out that direction, so, I took my coffee Saturday morning, drove around looking for stuff.
Yeah, that's, that was a very good point, because our tech said that too, he looked at the water.
Right, right across him, and I talked to Mort, and he was up Thursday, probably, Wednesday, Thursday, and he was up there, Bruce, he kind of looked at, and, they got, they're digging out my road there on Pine Avenue, and, right across from Mom and Dad's house, there was a water line, put in in the fifties, probably, Dad said they bought the farm in forty, forty, uh, he was seven, when he bought it, he's seventy-one now. Anyway, the water line was put in, and it's never froze or anything, but when they really dug the ditch out, that water line's gonna freeze, and they told us that they wanna dig it in deeper, well, that's not really gonna fix the problem that they made, um, the ditch comes with this, and the hater's about that part off, where they dug it out, out of the side of the ditch bank, and obviously the hater's got a drain back in it, but the cattle water line is right behind that, and, that comes up in there, but we're selling maybe that much dirt left there, and, that's gonna freeze, and they told them that they haven't put that dirt back in, and he said, no, they're gonna dig it down, well, that's not a feasible option, I mean, that's, we're gonna move to God, agree, you know.
So how do you, do that, we need to, to get, so there's cover everywhere on the pipe?
Right, and the water line, obviously, that runs to the cattle water that we moved.
Paul will be up here, just, he should be on next to...
Yeah, he's up next to us, we'll discuss that.
We'll talk about that with him, because that one's gonna happen.
Yeah, yeah.
In my driveways, they're doing the right thing, don't get me wrong, they're doing the very, very right thing on the road, they're fixing what should be and everything, but, then they're all got the driveways, and, the one they got fixed, now, I don't know if they're gonna fix the rest of them, but, uh, they got the driveways, they're still in, and they in and out of them, with, you know, with modern equipment. The one comment they got told was they're gonna put it back to what it was in the fifties, well, we're past the fifties by quite a few years already. You know, and, uh, uh...
Let's call it Paul when he gets on, these ones gonna have to trust him.
I got, just something to discuss, we had a conversation with someone over the weekend, about Roosevelt, um, we put a box tube in, and, uh, we set it to the ditch bottom, of course, that ditch needs, has two feet of silt in it, so their concerns was, the tube will get full of two feet of silt.
Yeah.
Here, they're asking, should we clean, have a clean out downstream, so the tube stays clean.
That would be the best, um...
Two feet, two feet, eight inches, or can't...
Yeah, all the guy got looked at, and then, and Dave was there, Dave was there at the time, and, and he said they set it to the original depth of the, the dredge ditch, he says there's about a two feet of silt in the ditch right now.
Yeah.
So they're asking if they should have a clean out, you know, maybe a quarter mile downstream, down from the new tube. What's your opinion on that?
I would say, generally, yes.
Yeah, see, of course.
Yeah, uh, now, they typically bury those above foot, just for stability, and, well, and you don't get much flow in the bottom foot of the pipe anyway.
Right.
Um, so...
What do you think the pipe is?
It's an eight by eight, and it's a two hundred feet long, so that's what is concerned, if it gets full, half full of silt.
Yeah, what do you have, like, what, more?
No, it's a southwest account, the new tube they just put in...
Southwest?
Excuse me, southeast.
Okay, I think you're right, I cleaned diagonal too.
Yeah, that diagonal one.
Last week.
That they put in.
Yeah, that is two hundred feet long, that's a big one.
Yeah, one of the guys out there, he was out there, he was just...
The thing to do is, you have somebody sign a work order to have it, I mean, that's what...
Well, actually, I suggested just have somebody come in, do a work order, clean with it.
Because you could do that hourly, very easily.
Right, and you at least did that part, and down the road, if you need more of it, see if they don't...
Yeah, that's my question, how far down do you think you'd have to go to?
Well, I could take a quick look, what district does that in?
Well, it's, uh, so...
I don't know what district it is, I know they asked us.
I could use a hill, right?
Yeah, I look at hills, farms.
It'd be...
Oh, is it?
Yeah, they got corn off, they were out there picking corn.
Four and fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine?
Yeah, did it four and fifty-nine?
Yes.
Yeah, I want to take a quick look, I was, I was gonna get somebody. Maybe I'll just take a quick look, if you think it's an South American, we can get back the person, love that, it's a work order.
Yeah.
If you think it doesn't need any problem, I guess...
I don't think it's gonna have to dry, getting any water down, out in that area. I said, it's gonna have to dry, a little bit over there, you just...
I think anything that moves is gonna get scoured out right now, because it's...
Yeah, yeah, they, that's...
So, now it is time to at least put it together.
Yeah, that's, that's, next summer.
But, assuming there's better be a business, we don't go out. What else you got going on, Rick?
Um, yeah.
I'm finished with the rest of Doug, on eighty-four.
Well, we could go ahead, we...
Done and done, you've been forward yet.
Yeah, we need a motion to, um, to set it aside, I guess.
Yeah.
Oh, we've already done the acceptance, we don't make a motion to, uh, to take no further action on the report.
Yeah, fine.
Second, man.
I got a question before you vote, what if you, are you gonna propose to give this to people up there, and let them make the decision, that that's what you're recommending?
Well, that's...
I mean, if the tile's running good, that's fine, but...
They, they activate it, right, and, notice was given to everybody, this is the day of all the action, and I think...
No one's hearing the complaints, and we're gonna take it, and do it.
With our observations, and no one hears it.
Decide we could act on it next week.
They'll come in next week and say, we gotta do something, we still got a problem.
I think we're up to, I just wanted to ask, if it's voted.
Good point, good point.
Yeah, we have motion second, follow me.
Aye.
Okay.
DD one fourteen, railroad Livermore. I have finished the, um, new reclassification, I still have to meet with Pat and Grant to get their approval, um...
I would talk to Doug, you know, following, is this what he wants to done, right?
Yes, yes.
Doug is very clear, and I'll be calling to make sure...
Now, here's, the only slight difference of opinion is, he has a feeling for whether railroad would be comfortable with this. I tried to ignore that, I compared the railroad's per acre benefit to other commercial properties, and to city of Livermore properties, I, those we intended to rank about same benefit. The railroad, as far as benefit per acre, is lower than the other two, the way I have it, but, it has them paying almost exactly thirteen percent of future work. They threw out a number, I think, to Doug, that was slightly lower than that, the upper end of what they said was one point lower than my thirteen, it was at twelve. I can easily justify the thirteen, I have written out the benefits, the railroad receives, Doug said I should be sure and have that, um, we're ready to, I, I'm hoping yet this week I can catch Pat and, and Grant, it's wet enough now, maybe it'll be two or three days before they can get back at things, um, get their approval officially submitted, start the clock in the forty days, this is a new reclassification for future repairs to the district, that's how Doug said to handle this, so...
Right, that's...
Yep, so after meeting is, reclassification commission, reviewing it, getting signatures, and get it submitted to you.
Well, if you stop at food pantry tomorrow, little before nine, it's that's passed, because we've got an unloaded truck, I might have to help our mother.
Ah, little before nine, wow, okay, I like, I kinda like projects like that, actually, so...
Well, it's always like three thousand pounds of food coming in the house.
Wonderful, I mean, that's...
At least I know where she's gonna be tomorrow, because we're getting a hold of it.
Okay, well, I'm not sure how many acres she farms, I know she's an active farmer, so, jeez, that must be, not been a Jacobson husband, I've been...
There's a guy, yeah.
Yeah, there's a guy, yeah.
Yeah, well, huh?
Just, just took a crap on me. So, anyway, will be...
That's good news.
Yeah, it is, I think, we can justify where, where we're at, um, I, I don't feel it's slightly higher than they were saying, because I can justify where I have it, and it's close to what they were thinking would be appropriate.
You have to go through the process, to get it right, and there you can't just assign a number, that's...
Exactly, exactly, that, I, yeah, I'd send it to them.
Build the mission.
Yeah.
Review it.
Yep, so, that'll be on your agenda very, very soon, um, okay. We've got word on the Dicky Pond, as far as, we got the code permit, and we got the sovereign lands, the inert clearance, and floodplain clearance, so, um, I expect to get the quote from Denver this week, I bet that would be, through them, so I'm hoping it's decent, so we can just go on with the contract, make a change order, that'd just be a lot cleaner, if we can do that, so...
What did, what did you and, uh, the Cassius County engineer come up with on, on Cassius County District?
That waterway?
Yeah.
Where, we've talked, I've talked to the landowner two or three times, I've talked, and I...
To the north?
No, no, I, no, I've talked to the, to the south, the one that needs it cleaned out, yeah, Dan Ward, some Dan Ward has the north one, I think.
Right.
And I've got his name, but I haven't got his number yet, um, we're gonna try talking to them, and see if we can do something this fall, if not, Hudson, the drainage attorney says he would be glad to work with the landowner's attorney, to come, tell them what section to quote, I've got it highlighted, to, that they can't restrict the flow downstream, but if that's the natural course, they have to maintain that, so, the, the one that's objected has been real decent about it, he said the landowner, that he's asked to do something about it is hesitant, so I'm thinking, that if I can call this Dan Ward, and just point out the code section, and briefly comment on it, that maybe, maybe, he'd do it, or at least let people in to do it.
All right.
So, I'm hoping to have something more on that in, within a week.
Let me know when you find out, then.
Yes, okay, we've made the contacts, we know the section of code to apply, we know that it should be cleaned out, it's a matter of what act, what path do we follow to get that taken care of, so. Um, DD six, done by Thor, um, we've got the reclass done, I'm gonna call it the preliminary reclass done, so that we can go forward with a hearing on that main tile again, and people will have an idea, a real good idea, what their cost would be.
Okay.
I met with the commissioners one time, and we came up with adjustments we thought would be appropriate, basically what we did is, we took the two thousand twelve and two thousand fourteen area photographs, found the areas that had the large ponds on them, we put the acres with the heavy ponding at a hundred points per acre, and then the balance of them, we used the soils numbers, like we would otherwise, so that weighted those. I met with commissioners after we did that, and, uh, they were good with it.
Because those are basic areas, that aren't getting a problem here after you...
Right, exactly, yeah, very, very close, you know, very little from twelve to fourteen.
Those areas in that...
Yes, we use area photographs.
Outside of that, would be back to the basics.
Yes, correct.
I think that's a good start.
Perhaps, we'll, we have an annexation report ready too, because there's some lands that, on the fringe, that should be brought in, and we're, we're changing the titles on these, um, tile with the project, we're, the main goes to the east, northeast, and then east again, we're having a lower main and an upper main, because, there's also another sub-district down below, that uses the last few hundred feet of the main.
Branch it out.
So we gotta branch it out.
Sure.
It's not fair for that sub-district to have to pay for all the upper main, so we've got that all separated in the reclass, but...
A lot of work on this one.
Yeah, um, but if, and I meant to go over this with Trish beforehand, I believe that we can call, oh, thank you very much, um, I, I believe that the branch B was not, they didn't remonstrate against that. Yeah, it went forward, so, worst case, we could have a bid living on, on the branch, anytime. I, it's a good project, it's completely set up from the main, no one paying in B, I mean, it's...
That's good, separation's clear.
Yeah, separation's very clear, we're taking branch B directly to the open ditch, it does not use any of the main anymore, so, we could go forward with that, now, I think it's a big enough project, we could get some large and small contractors involved, uh...
But smaller ones, a chance.
A chance too, I mean, it's still gonna be a lot of money, but, a smaller operation could handle it, so, I'm thinking what we should probably do is, one of these first meetings, set a hearing for the DD six, lower main and upper main tile, um, because they wanted to have the reclass before they made the decision.
Yeah.
Right.
And some of those are pretty expensive, yeah, but, but it's good to know that it's already started.
It's reflecting where the benefit is coming.
I completely agree.
On average, at this one, it's a big difference.
All about them.
He is.
Plus, it's reflecting the ones that asked for it, and they're the ones that are getting the benefit.
That's right, so that's, that's a good thing, so, well, I'll probably call, stamp that, uh, reclassification a draft, um, because, rather than go through all the hearing, you know, the hearing, and then getting it, making it the official, uh, document for loving, if this project doesn't move forward, you don't wanna do this reclassification, we would, we would wanna review it.
Right.
Yeah, because the benefit would be different, because the upper end now doesn't get that much benefit, because it's tile size, now they will.
Somebody change the mind.
Yes, yeah, that's right, that's exactly right, so, I'll work with Trish on dates for presenting that, and how to word it, because we may include the annexation report in that same, uh, notice, so...
Is it better to have the combined project for bid practice?
Um, if, if, it, if it drew a large contractor in, yeah, um, I'm not sure it's gonna be necessary for this, that, that would be my preference, combine it, yeah, just for paperwork and...
Keeping it simple.
Yeah.
I mean, not confusing, not...
We are separating our engineering between main and branch B.
Thank you.
Yeah, because otherwise, at the end, you try and fox it out, so...
It'd be hard, hard to do.
Yeah, because, especially if we do a separate contractor, that's just gonna be way easier, uh, to, in the end, to deal with it, and, you know that any work with that contractor, say, for example, now would be branch B work, so, there's some advantages separating them, the biggest advantage of combining, you might get a larger contractor interested.
She might get a couple smaller ones this way.
That's right.
Plus, if you keep it separated, as this project grows, if there's any problems in, you know, there, you might have two different contractors, which is okay, plus, you know exactly how many dollars goes to each one, there's not gonna be any question, they don't have a tile, there aren't any questions, and this, how are they...
Yes, yeah.
You with the contract, because you can't always know the contractor divides those up sometimes.
Yeah, yeah, that's true, and, yeah, with the materials, every, I mean, there's several advantages splitting, the, the combining...
Trish has to do it twice, but, if you're keeping dollars, you're keeping things separate.
Yeah, we've got phase one and phase two on our, on our time cards.
Well, you can't run that.
Yeah.
So knowing once you know what you have to do, what, if you were throwing a dart at a calendar, what, where are you hoping to...
I'd bid it sometime toward... I'd bid it sometime towards the end of October. And give them a chance to work on it, if they could, this fall, this fall, yeah. Uh, someone like Denver would be very interested in that, because, well, they've had two different experiences. One where there was a lot of snow, so they just clear off the day's work and go. They, they, they worked to the middle of the winter, um, one way.
Would be a good project for a winter one, wouldn't be so big that you had a good chance of getting it done.
Yeah, yeah, so...
Cause that deep, is it plumbed with the plumery?
Some of us, it kinda be, we were shocked at how, when we went out to explore to find the old tile, um, they used some kind of, I don't know whether it was horse-drawn scrapers or something, because the trench was three feet wide at the top, I mean, it was, and then it's, because they had trouble finding it, the, the old tile, because usually your trench, you know, is pretty narrow, and you can see the difference in dirt. But the difference in dirt was so wide.
So, that meant it was pretty deep.
Yeah, yeah.
Wow.
So, but it's not, by today's standards, it's not deep, I think we're twelve feet, unfair amount of it, so... By today's standards, it's not that-
Twelve feet, great, dude.
It'd be thirteen, maybe fourteen, a hundred and one years ago.
Better than the head on that wall.
Yeah.
They give you a chair, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 there probably are a lot of whiskey bottles buried out there somewhere, so, um, yeah.
Okay, that's good news, that stuff doing.
So, we'll come back, um, I'm gonna meet with Gary Neve to look at a couple of things out on his ground for DD one twenty-five.
Is next week, next Sunday, when we're gonna meet with you and Trish?
Yes, I think it is, and Trish and I still have to get through some of that here, so...
We'll, um, talk to you about some of that after the meeting, cause then I think maybe a couple of us should meet with you and Trish.
Sure.
Talk about some options.
Sure, okay.
Make sure we're ready for that meeting.
Yes, yes, yes.
Don't wanna be like the wine business.
No, very good point.
And then if we were from Denver this week, on that pond, that'd be great.
Well, I'd love to get that.
Get that whole project done.
Yes, sir.
Set, or set up there too, so you can discuss what's happening.
Mm-hmm. Right.
So, we'll make it into the relative, and that's great, and it's good to get that.
Yeah, oh, that's- Yeah, I, I, like I said, and I've got it documented for benefit, and, uh, yeah.
Alright, most of you are engaged?
I'm gonna tell what's said.
Second, everybody's on paper.
Alright.
Alright.
Let her get back to work.
Turn off, keep that even.
Yeah, yeah.
Look, it's like a sip on the-
Brandy and then, or?
Get Brandy and then, where do you get the creeping crud from?
I don't know.
Any year, girl. Yeah.
Yeah.
Not really, yeah. If you run that door through the plane or something, take a tap, you're shot.
Yeah, it's, it's a problem.
The problem is, it's still today, you know. Well, it hurt lady who moved it.
Yeah. I hope, Bruce, I was gonna tell you, I'm gonna try and review records in the courthouse for that. If there's an easement on that, help out the right way. If there's an easement on the, on the west side of it.
Great.
Yeah, see what's going on out there.
Okay.
One of the offices in here should be able to tell me, without spending too much time, so...
That would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think it's Nelson catch you, but you said you wanna, you wanna talk today yet, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, it's really, wow.
Trish, what do you?
Nothing.
Just gonna be a hit and a hit.
Wow. Didn't eat my wheaties.
I'm starving, dude.
Yeah, watch out.
Keep your head very welcome.
Alright, Paul, you're up.
You have a schedule, Mr. Chair. There's that of yours. Serious part? So, our first call, Paul, is that a direct thing? Midland Power underground work for service, yeah.
Uh, they're trying to go underground for a, a service under the road, and while they're doing that, they're considering repoling some of it. Uh, we looked at it Friday with Midland Pull, uh, Power, and I would approve this request contingent on moving the power line to the back foot and a half of the right away. At this point, they have stakes that are in the outside of the right away. Ditch bottom, we just soon get them back. If it works for them, works for us, if it doesn't work for them, they'll drop, uh, from one of the existing poles and bore across the road anyway. So, the boring shouldn't be in, boring or trenching across the road shouldn't be an issue either way. It's whether or not they wanna repole or respan. Right now, they're crossing the road, part of the reason they cross the road is to stay in the middle of the road, going through the trees. And that's probably why they went across it, they got the angle on the road and shot through the middle.
Okay. The one that most of the crews, in the, in the second, that's all right.
All is in favor?
Not here. You're up. I do, I'm done. Say your- We got questions on the, this, you know?
Oh, yeah?
Uh, okay. David, it's Ross from on the mail office, too, the weekend. The county's done an excellent job of creating the road, it really has, and I can see what they wanna do there. But they dug the water line out too far, and the guy's so lean, if they wanna dig it deeper, well, that's not gonna fix the problem, the problem is, they dug too far back into the ditch bank, and there was basically a, a walkway put in back in the fifties, or earlier even before that, then to get up to that height, and the water line is thin back. And the way they dug it out, the water line in the ditch itself is probably only eight inches deep now, eight, ten inches. And then, and like, against that height, and the cattle water, it's probably, maybe ten inches, ten four inches, maybe fourteen. And, uh, it's gonna freeze, is, is the biggest thing. And then, um, the driveways, they, we narrow them, they narrow them up, you know, and we gotta get that widened back out. Some of them do not have a pipe down, and they do need a pipe down. I'm more than willing to pay for the pipe, but, uh, we're currently, and at the end of the hour, we're paying a credit, and I got that down already to sell, but, you know, since the cattle are sold, the grain is sold, one of the others, then I'm gonna go to the paper, and, and I suppose that wasn't gonna happen, but, um, I don't see why it can't happen.
On the driveway, driveway policy must extend, and, and there's two, and they're working on that, right? You have to work with them, sign it.
We went through the work, and, and the issue on that was, will we hold the check? And we won't hold the check.
Okay.
I mean, that gets dangerous for us, because if somebody inadvertently can't, cashes a check that's no good, who covers it?
Right, okay, okay.
Uh, we don't have a policy on working on credit and driveway.
Is driveway gonna be a problem to South Carolina?
Well, not, yeah, I still know, I mean, the one they got fixed, uh, at least I can get in it up with the government, with the-
Oh, okay.
Which one?
The-
North one?
The north one, yeah. So, the one that raised across the road from there, they narrowed it up to-
What we did is, they're getting back to what the pipe was.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, and that's not unusual on any cleanout, what we find, we find an assortment of water lines, uh, uh, intakes, driveway pipes, uh, on the one south on Lone Tree, we found two crosspipes, we didn't know that existed. That's the things that find out. Unfortunately, they have a, uh, water right at the right away, or within the right away, technically, if we wanted to do that far, um, and the water line was placed, sometimes it's plastic, so...
Oh, it was plastic water line?
Yeah.
Mine is, yeah. And- And Ray said it was probably, it's fifty pound pipe, so, he said it's old.
But anyway, regardless, that is nothing, unfortunately, it's in the right away, uh, it's, it should be a property owner's concern, and, and rightly so. Uh, what we thought we would do is, uh, uh, dig it, if you wanted to lower it, lower it in, but the rest of the story is, the water is so close and so tight up high, in the back slope.
I feel like that, Chris, that's tension like-
But, is, uh, should this be a county issue? I mean-
Well, it is, to me, it's about five steel loader buckets to fix it again, I mean, the way it was, it was that way.
Okay, so, we can put a pipe there?
That's a, do you rip just a pipe and then cover up the dirt, put the walkway kinda back in there?
Again, a lot of this was built when the ditch was about full, no pipes in anything. We got drainage concerns all over the place, uh, right now, we're trying to do core outs finally from the, from the frost in the spring. We're trying to be in there and be done with it, and get it done, uh, we, uh, put the driveways back as we find them, as we have before. And unfortunately, we have policy on the driveway, and, and, and we can't hold checks, uh, we, we know he wants to widen it. I think we lowered it, and we, we have, uh, we lowered it, because we replaced the whole pipe. Instead of putting thirty foot pipe back in, we put forty. Uh, I guess I did extend credit, cause instead of cutting a pipe, we got ten extra feet in that he'll hold us for at some point.
We do a fifty without any concern, can't really piece with that.
No, he, he's got that as long as he, he owned it, I think, anyway, instead of just putting thirty, and he got forty, and right off the bat. Uh, cause we were owning it, if we weren't owning it or anything, then, then, uh, we wouldn't, and, and, uh, the pipe was clear full. Instead of-
Well, you're doing the pipes, you put ecstasy.
Two revokes, right. Well, and, and his ways now narrowed up to the thirty foot of pipe that was there.
Okay.
And there's other instances on the south end of this, there's huge driveways that will need pipe, and, and, uh-
We can go in and pay for a pipe, but you're gonna have to wait, I mean, it's simply gonna have them, sure, right now, I mean, it's a bossing, and, and what, there's two hundred and fifty on the back gout, so, I think they'll make a whole lot of money, but they're gonna make some, and they dropped us right there too, ready to come out.
We have a freezer at secondary roads, that, you know. You know, before, thank you, so...
You know, I don't really like things, I mean, they're doing the right thing, the parts were there, let's, let's do it and, and get it done right. I mean, the stakes that were made by my grandfather and my father, you know, was, was-
And we cut out the pipe, yeah, the rest of it, anytime, I mean, it's not any different than it was before. We're, we're not gone yet, but, uh, and we can come back, it'll, actually, we'll probably cut it with a tractor backhoe as opposed to a forty-eight inch ditching bucket anyway, so, yeah. That, that shouldn't be the issue, the issue was the north one, where he had, uh, well, corner beans, I don't even remember which one. And, and that was narrow, and, and that's all it ever was, so, uh-
That was-
This policy and the policies, any policy we can ever find, we might have sold the dirt for three bucks a load, but we always, the property owner was responsible for the pipe.
Yeah, and the next driveway too, we gotta get that one there. You know, they know, the road, let's put it back, the way the road was, you could get it out with a semi, I mean, that's cause the way it was, but now they changed the road, so now we gotta make the driveway to widen it, cause the ten one's over there, actually, we get some of that, you know.
And we need some shaping on the south one, where we need to get some permission from him to cut back into the field, his whole lot. Everything drains out the driveway right onto the road, we need to get it into the ditch, so we can handle it, as opposed to wash the road out every time we get a rain.
Uh, uh-
And part of that would be narrowing it up and raising and cutting back into, uh, into-
So, I can get semis in, now, whether, I got a semi there bothering the other day, you know, either for tires or for field lot, one or the other, you know. It's probably one of the, the most highly protected end real quicks.
Yeah, apparently.
You know, between us and Paul, so, uh...
So, we're, we're gonna get figured out, then?
Between, I, I thought we had it figured out, but apparently not, uh, what, what we're gonna do is, gonna continue to do what we intended to do in the first place. His water line issue, no, I don't have that figured out, because as far as the rest of the county's concerned, he has water lines across the public. If we would go through a permit process like this, he's solely responsible for it. If he'd have done them now, if he'd have done them thirty years ago.
These were done fifty years ago.
Yeah, before the process started.
Well, even at that point, there's permitted things out there, where, where somebody puts private property on the public way, it's been the private owner's responsibility, and what we were attempting to do was to lower it, at least through the ditch. Unfortunately, the water is built right at the top of the back slope up there.
So, lowering the water line doesn't help the water.
The water, the, the water's still gonna be up where it was before, I mean, four foot of that was up above grade before. If it froze before, it's gonna freeze again, if it did freeze before, it isn't. I mean, that was stuck in up where it was, so, I mean, they didn't have it full to grade at that point, well, yeah.
It's gonna freeze.
Yeah.
So, that's, uh, I mean, what's the best way to fix the freezing problem?
I said, to every age, just put a taken, put the ditch back right back to the way it was, I want, and-
Put, put a pipe in there, cause a ditch-
I, myself, I was even a nice for a pipe in there.
The best way would be-
Kind of on the hills, um, the water's either gonna run back to the, to the north, or else it's gonna run back to the south on the hill there, I mean, it's kinda on a little, some of the tunnels, they're the highest part of the hole. Yeah, you know, so, and if you put a pipe in there, even if you put an eight inch pipe in there, you're not insulating the water line, unless you're gonna dig the water line deeper in the ditch itself.
Well, the other thing, my, the pipe was probably four, four to six inches under-
Yeah.
The depth of the ditch.
Yeah.
The way it is right now, so, it's already in danger of freezing.
Yeah, you know, I think it's, I mean, I could do it with a skid row, or, probably fifteen minutes, and half a dump truck load of dirt back in there. Then I could do that if you want me to, even if that's no big deal, so, but, we gotta get the dirt back up towards that, that ditch bank.
Paul?
And on the floor.
If a driveway was put in there, does it require a pipe in all locations, on top of hills like that?
Uh, right here, I don't know, we have to look at it, but it looks like it'd need a pipe, that's, our thought was, put a pipe through it, but it isn't. We've got driveways all over, I mean, this was filled in over the decades, and, and, uh, all of this was, uh-
The question I asked, do we permit driveways without pipes?
Yeah, we have driveways without pipes.
So, we, you know, we would allow a driveway without a pipe, if it's on top of the hill.
Right.
That would be more of a walkway, wouldn't it?
Well, it's a small driveway.
And you wouldn't, it wouldn't get that much pipe.
No, that way. But the problem with the pipe is, then you got the cold air-
Yeah, but the back slope is still exposed, Rick, and has been exposed.
We gotta fill it back, you didn't know what it was, it's cut out.
But if you put a, please, put a driveway in there, the back slope would be filled in, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I mean, put it up-
I don't know, I haven't been out and looked at it, it's pretty high.
Oh, it is that, yeah, it is pretty deep. So, that height in perspective, it's deep, I mean, I-
Best way for now in the future is to do this.
Yeah.
Do what your policy says, if they wanna permit something to go through, then it's fifty years down the road, or ten years, or five years. When it freezes this winter, it's, they're basically about-
The dollars start getting watered.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, is they're not getting watered, that's what I wanna know. I mean, can we, is that process, could have hired, or, or, or-
Don't know, and again, I don't, yeah. The best, yeah.
The boat's all the problem, isn't it?
It was, not necessarily.
Not necessarily, well-
And that's not gonna guarantee that water not freezing.
Probably the best way would be to get it working the right way, and redo this, and get the height back into the field, rather.
Well, I guess we could stake right away and see if the height, and see if, I don't think it'd be dark, but if you got it back into the field. Well, then it's not a problem. And then we just leave him the line through the ditch.
That's still not gonna fix the problem, the, the ditch you could fill in a little bit, that, that'll fix the bottom of the hole. The problem is, you're gonna have to recut the water line, dig it under the cement, or tear the snail, and move it back, you know, three foot, or five foot.
Ten?
You know, whatever, listen down the other side of, yeah, so...
So, is it a pad, is it?
There's, there's a cement pad, that the hogs walked on, the cows walked on for fifty years. I got a picture in the pickup, I guess, I could go and get it quick, and the problem is, they didn't make it in the sixties, so you need, situation with the water line up right on the right away, that's the problem, I mean, it's not an everyday occurrence. It was fine back then, but I'm not gonna fly today with the ditch cleaned up, you know. But to do it right, the pipe, the height, probably should be set back. Then you have to, you still have to cut to the cement, you know, give it back, but that's probably the pressure, it needs to make it right for everybody. If you want the ditch cleaned out the way it is, if you wanna make an exception, then that's a different deal. I don't know, this is a tough question, it's a tough one, to me, uh, no good answer.
I'd like to go out and look at it personally, take a look.
You know, to me, a three, four bucket loads of dirt with a skid row would have it fixed. To me, a three, four rocket road to build with a skid row would have it fixed again, you know, and it's, it's on a hill.
Well, Rick, why don't you go out with more?
Yeah.
You guys look at it.
Well, that is...
The problem is the roads in the cut section. And that's the problem with the, with the frost boils we have out there. The roads, quite a bit considerably lowered the train on either side and part of the point of, um, fixing this or doing, maintaining this was to put it back for positive...
Drainage.
Positive drainage, get rid of everything that's fault.
Mm-hmm.
And actually coring out some of this because the water table tends to be at the road surface or higher even though, because it's so high on either side, the road...
You can really see that out there on Lone Tree Road, between the ditch, the water's just coming out of the, the back slope of the field. I mean, just running out of the field.
But where this is, there's never been a frost boil, ever. I'm forty-six years old and lived on that road my whole life and that particular spot here has never been an issue.
Okay.
Again, this is an individual's problem.
Well, as long as you need a situation.
This is a deals with, uh, working the right-of-way for now and any future owners. Uh, we have many instances where we have private, uh, uh, permitted facilities in the right-of-way. And whenever there's an issue, it's clearly up to the property owner to deal with the issue. And, and it has been that way now and it has been in the past. This has just never been dealt with. Nothing's been done. I, I mean, we found the road, the ditch bottom out there as we're cleaning, but, uh, David's been there forty-some years and I don't know that we've ever cleaned anything.
Not that I know of.
I mean, nothing's been tackled and that because it is a stud road. Other than it is now an Audubon stud road, uh, nobody's put any money or effort into this thing for decades.
Okay, you guys go out and look.
Yeah, I'll take a look at it.
Talk about it some more. Well, I know when you're coming, yeah, I'll do it for magic period.
Okay.
You've got that road under or... Maybe take Dave out with you too. You know, I'll take Dave out with you too. He knows what you're talking about.
No, I'll go if anybody's...
Or I'll go with Sue.
Because, uh, again, it's something that should be covered here, not only for today, but for the future.
Future. Okay. You need situations, always.
All right, give me a call and I'll, I'll make a point to be there.
Yeah.
I'll met in fact, I'll even drive a good dad to be there, so...
Yeah, he might as well.
Somebody, you got his number?
I got it, it's three six eight.
Okay.
Oh, six nine nine.
Yeah.
Oh, six nine nine?
Yeah.
Give me thirty, I'll do the measure of service and I can do that.
So that I can take you off my...
Yeah.
Thank you, guys. You bet.
Uh, otherwise, this weekend, uh, flooding, uh, our normalists were flooded. Um, the unfortunate thing, uh, the most exasperating thing of any of this lately is when we put a road close, sign up with a orange fence on it. Uh, that automatically means to some people, tear the fence down and drive it up. Well, I'm glad you ditch is one thing, but when you tear the fence down, you leave it widely exposed for the next person that thinks, oh, it must be okay. The fence is down and they drive through and our biggest exposure around here isn't this waterline. Our exposure is somebody's car floating down the river while the river's still going up and these clowns continue to tear the fence down.
Mm-hmm.
Somebody needs to deal with that and, uh...
It's not like you got foot steel posting there in four feet.
That doesn't matter.
Break them off too, it's...
Um, that is a law enforcement problem?
Well, it's a law enforcement problem or if it's indeed, uh, that road does not, in, in a couple of these cases, the road doesn't get a lot of action all year, maybe it's a good candidate for level B roads. Stone and Divine are the first two that come to mind. Make them level B now and be done with it. And then if people want to destroy whatever's up there that we're trying to protect the people, uh...
That'd be great, what are you doing?
But, uh, we're trying to put a bridge in on the east side of, uh, Divine at this point, and at this point, I think we'll hold that off, uh, until we get the water down on the Divine so we can at least get something in the back way, 'cause once we close the bridge on the east side, we can't get to it. But, uh, no, our, our highest and worst enemy out there, our highest exposure to liability is flood stage continuing to climb where some clown opens a gate earlier in the day or in the evening and then you get somebody else that might be impaired or otherwise, it won't matter, it'll still be us that's on the...
Yeah, they're always on the hook.
And then as soon as they drive in and water on the way up that you could've gone through four hours later, it's cut out now or... You see, uh, road closed, it means road closed. There, that was my spiel. But it, it, uh, there are scary spots on these roads, uh, uh, that cut deep and it would float a vehicle in a hurry and it might have been that they drove through it hundreds of times over the years, but this might be the last time.
What was up, wasn't it up north at Renwick?
Up at Renwick, north of Renwick, and, uh, anytime we had the gate shut, it opened, uh, within hours on the hefty bridge. Why?
On the hefty bridge, huh?
Top of the hill, it was open every time I went there except for this morning.
Really?
Yeah.
A boat came out of there, a, a duck boat came out on Saturday morning.
Really?
Seasoned open.
Really?
That's seasoned open Saturday.
So they were up on that flood stage?
They were looking for flooding.
Shooting ducks over that one?
And that thing, so...
But, you know, they couldn't close the gate as they were going in and out. I mean, we had this problem with the paving. We had people drive through the paving that was fresh. But that's loss of, uh, uh, that's just damage to property.
Yeah, it's a loss.
Nobody's floating down the river where we're trying to, yeah, anyway, yeah.
Should know the what a road close sign is, I don't know how, how you educate someone, you know? Yeah, and then you put a fence up to take the fence down.
Yeah. No, and that's where we, uh, until the water starts coming down soon, you can see what obstructions we got, it's, uh, I, I know the locals are proud to drive through any of these no matter what, but, uh...
Well, yeah, I could learn from a kid, but I wouldn't even go that far to...
Some of the areas...
But it, you know, and the locals might be well aware of the hazards out there from over the years, but it's the other guy that drives through afterwards.
Yep.
And then...
As long as we're getting bought on.
And then, uh, yeah.
Losses.
Otherwise, uh, we just talked about Pine Avenue and Lone Tree, we found some of the same things. We found, uh, two crosspipes, uh, a couple drain tiles, uh, and a lot of just seepage out of the hill.
Yeah, I just got, there was water just coming out of the back slope of the ditch after, after we got a ditch.
But we have, yeah, and we narrowed it up and tightened the curb somewhat. We tried to do that and get the traffic used to it.
Drive it around the road instead on the...
Right. Um, there's only so much we can do on some of these things. Um, all the gravels have been mowed once. We switched back to, uh, the Dakota City shop, got all the highways mowed again. Uh, and we're already into the fourth mowing and, and might be fifth. Uh, unfortunately, the broadleaf and the grass and the rain and, uh, heat has, uh...
Keep it coming.
But we're continuing to plug along. Um, they are starting core outs on Pine Avenue. Our effort was to, on any of these, uh, is to clean the ditch, the whole area first, and then come back and address the issues of driveways or crosspipes. In the case of Lone Tree, uh, we have a couple extensions we're gonna put on there. We're letting it drain for a while. We're gonna put some, some extensions on the east side of the road and get us a flatter side slope to the road. We're fairly vertical now with them, uh, but we're letting things, uh, dry up. I believe they're building driveways somewhere else today. Um, but our effort would be to go extend a couple of those pipes and then we'd be done[1580.83]